Lance Gary from First Baptist Church to come up and lead us in the invocation. Welcome, sir, and happy new year.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our dear Father, we do want to thank you for who you are, recognizing that you are God. We know that you, that nothing in this last year has surprised you and that through it all, you remain in control and through it all, we can continue to learn to rely on you more. We know that you've placed leaders in place for this specific time and that through their leadership, that many things can happen. We ask that you lead with wisdom. Christ's name, amen.
Thank you for being here. Have a good evening. This time at six thirty P M., we're going to call the meeting order and announce we do have a quorum present. All council members are here this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Councilman Cleveland, do you mind doing honors?
Absolutely. If you would stand and join me for the pledge of the U S and Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks for that, Mr. Cleveland. Item four on the agenda, items of community interest. Mr. Hotop, anything, sir?
I have none.
I did have one quick thing, counsel, I wanted to share. I was honored to receive an invitation from our state representative, Phil King, to, the invitation was to the swearing in ceremony, which was today in Austin for the eighty-seventh legislative session. Very appreciative of Representative King for that invitation. He invited me on behalf of the city council. Proud of our partnership, proud of his representation in Austin for our city and for the counties of Parker and Wise, and felt like our community needed to know that. Representative King clearly is tremendously respected as a legislator and as a person in Austin, and I was honored that the city of Weatherford and one of our governing body members was able to go down.
Mr. Mayor, if I may say something as well?
Please.
I just wanted to say thanks to our Parks Department for a great job with the Heritage Park Lights Display that was set up last month. It was, considering the circumstances that we're in with COVID, even outside of that, it was a great event to take the family to, and I saw a lot of people there enjoying that, and it's just a great thing to see our parks doing a great job again. So really enjoyed that and wanted to say thank you to them.
Well said, sir. Any other thoughts, ideas, any? Great. Item five on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Five A is consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on December the fifteenth, twenty twenty. Motion on the floor by Kevin Cleveland for approval. Is there a second? Second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion before we call for a vote on five A? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote at this time on five A. Indicate yea or nay, please. Minutes pass four. We do have one recusal, Mr. Robinson. Five B, consider approval of the minutes of the city council special session held on December the seventeenth of twenty twenty. Any discussion on the item or is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Mayor Pro Tim for approval, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any discussion before we call for a vote on five B? Call for a vote at this time, five B. We have four yays and one recusal. Item six, consent agenda items. Counsel, we have six A, six B, and six C, and six D. Would you like to entertain this as a body or does anybody like to pull out one item to hear individually?
I'd like to pull item six C to hear individually, please.
Item six C for individual consideration. Any others? Entertaining motion for approval, if that's your pleasure, for item six A, B, and D. Consent agenda items, motion by Jeff Robinson, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion on those three items? Hearing none. We'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Passes five zero. Item six C, consider award of request for proposal R F P number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six to Christian Cleaning for janitorial services of municipal buildings in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents, with options for special events and emergency cleaning set at thirty-five dollars per hour. Mr. Tiscus, you requested this be pulled?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Deal, do you have information related to this item, sir?
I believe so. Mayor, council members, Dustin Deal, Director of Municipal and Community Services, and what you have before today, before you today, is an R F P for janitorial services for various municipal buildings that we clean and service. The proposals that came in and were submitted were significantly different in pricing, ranging from fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. That being the case, staff relied heavily on our scoring matrix to determine best value. Our scoring criteria was advertised in the R F P that we sent out. It was then scored by a small internal committee, and then it consisted of the various qualifications that I can go into for you. One, the proposal, was it properly submitted? Have they been in business for three-plus years? They have comparable experience. Their financial statements, is the vendor adequately prepared to fulfill the agreement? Was the insurance requirements met? Does the vendor office within twenty miles of the courthouse? Was the purchase price fair, realistic? The reputation of the vendor and the vendor's goods and services, the vendor's past relationship with the municipality, a hub vendor status, as well as is the vendor, does the vendor allow for a supervisor to be available on a weekly and monthly basis for any issues that may come up available? These qualifications were weighted differently. Some of the administrative qualifications were less in the weight versus some of the qualifications relating to how well they can do the job or their experience or their references were weighted more. At the conclusion of the scoring process, the committee averaged all the scores, and Christian Cleaning did have the highest scoring, considerably higher than some of the other or the next available one as well. Therefore, they were selected as the proposal of best value. So tonight, what we are asking is for council to award the R F P to Christian Cleaning Services.
Mr. Tiscus, any follow-up questions?
No, no follow-up questions. I just, as I was looking at the agenda in the bid tab with the wide range pricing, I called Mr. Deal earlier and discussed it, and after our discussion, I just felt it was good for him to come and share that information, just so the public can hear the process that was gone through to determine who is the best fit for this job. Of course, we have, I think, a relationship with the company already. They do a good job for us, which of course is always important. Felt like it was important for folks to hear the process that was gone through on this, so.
Well said, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on six C? All right, this time we entertain a motion, if that's your pleasure. Pleasure made by Matt Tiscus for approval, second by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion on six C? Will we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Passes five zero. Item seven, regular agenda items. Seven A, consider adoption of ordinance oh-two-zero-two-one dash zero-one on the voluntary annexation of Arrow Point at Eastlake being six point oh-eight-six acres, including five point three-three-seven acres situated in the J L Edwards survey, abstract number four-one-six, Parker County, Texas, as conveyed to David Wilson, Kyle Lawson, and Bobby Joe Whaley, as evidenced by deed recorded in instrument number two-zero-one-nine-three-three-four-one-six, deed records, Parker County, Texas. Said five point three-three-seven acres includes all of lots four through eight, East Lakeview addition and addition to Parker County, Texas. According to the plat recorded in volume two-ninety, page six-oh-four, plat records, Parker County, Texas, said six point zero-eight-six acres also includes zero point seven-four-nine acres of Arrow Point Drive right-of-way as dedicated to Parker County, Texas, to enlarge and extend the boundary limits of the city. Mr. Hotop?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
You want that read again? You're going to have to do it yourself.
Yeah, that's one of our shorter ones, too, so. So this is a voluntary annexation of six point oh-eight-six acres for a sixteen-lot single-family subdivision located at Eastlake and Arrow Point Drive. So there's two public hearings that were held on December fifteenth and December seventeenth. No one showed up in opposition to that, and it does not extend the E T J boundaries today, and staff recommends approval.
Counsel, any questions on this item? Seven A. Hearing none, entertaining motions, if that's your pleasure. Motion by Kevin Cleveland, second by Jeff Robinson. Any discussion before we call for a vote on seven A? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes five zero. Seven B on the agenda is consider adoption of ordinance oh-two-zero-two-one dash oh-two, amending chapter four of Title Eight, Food Establishments for the City of Weatherford. Mr. Kettner, good evening, sir.
Yes, Mayor and council, you have in your packet a full staff report that outlines this amendment to the food establishment, and part of this has been in conjunction with the recent amendments to zoning regulations where we have allowed food trucks in to the community where we haven't permitted them previously except for special events and so forth. And so what we've done is we've reviewed over those food truck requirements, and some of the discussion that had come up was the cost of some of those permits. And one of the areas that we feel that staff looked at based on those comments was the food establishment license, which we're directed to do as a consumer health department and is dictated by the state minimum requirements that we're required to do. And so as we looked at that, we also looked at the full food establishment licenses because it goes for the brick-and-mortar restaurants and permanent locations as well. And we wanted to reduce that cost to be able to, you know, show that we're open for business. And right now, one of the hardest-hit industries with the COVID is our, is a restaurant and service industry's side of things. And we feel that this would be, one of the things we're doing is moving this to a two-year permit versus a one-year permit. So that way, this year we would extend everyone that was permitted in twenty twenty till to twenty twenty-two in February and allow them that grace period, allow them opportunity to prepare for that change as we move in that. At this time, we're not adjusting any of the fees. The fees would be just what the fee would be. All our costs are pass-through costs for our third-party inspectors that do those inspections. And particularly for food trucks, a lot of times we're paying, right now, they would be required to pay three hundred dollars per year for two inspections per year. But we also do those events and those inspections already, and this provides a way for them to reduce that. So if they did an event, for example, in Fort Worth, and then they came to here for the very next weekend to do an activity, then they've had already an inspection last week, that inspection would be still valid. We would accept, seeing that their trucks had been inspected by another health organization, that our main purpose for this is to make sure that the food is safe for the public and that they're located in the appropriate locations. So with that, this is what this amendment does, is it does change it to a two-year permit, allows greater flexibility for us to reciprocate those licenses from other jurisdictions, particularly for the mobile and the temporary users of food establishments. There is still other work to do, but this helps us get started and as well helps all the brick-and-mortar shops that are in our city limits to extend theirs through to twenty twenty-two without any additional fees or paperwork.
Questions on seven B for Mr. Kettner?
I just, again, want to say thanks for working. I discussed with Mr. Kettner before, I think, Christmas maybe, or I can't remember now. It's been a little while. But thanks for working with the staff on that. I did speak to a number of food truck vendors in our community to get their perspective, and I know they're thankful for some of the changes and how we're working with them. So just thanks for your work and help on that.
Both comments?
Yeah, I wanted to commend you. You know, the food truck thing, being up here for a little while, you've seen that some things have taken some time to get in place. I want to commend you guys on the speed at which things are starting to happen. So from complaint to fixing the problem, as you said, was it a mid-December?
Yeah.
And a great deal of the problem is already solved. So thank you guys for moving quickly when problems arise.
Clearly, you're listening to your customers, and where it is still, you know, fitting and where it can be done, there's common ground that's being found, and that's a win-win deal, and that's really what we're here to do. So thank you for that. I think both these gentlemen have said that. Thank you for being open to those suggestions and willing to support our customers. All right, seven B, we have a motion on the floor for approval by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any other thoughts or comments, excuse me, before we call for a vote? Seven B, we'll call for a vote at this time. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes five zero. Item eight is staff reports. Eight A is an update regarding the progress of the downtown bypass project. Good evening, Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Terry Hughes, Director of Calphal Projects. I will start, if you don't mind, with an exhibit that you're all familiar with. It's our overall program for the downtown. What we refer to as the downtown project, it comes in three phases. The north bypass is phase one, it's broken into two parts. Phase two is the southern bypass, and then, of course, phase three, or the final goal, is what we refer to as Heritage Square. With that being said, I'm going to refer back to a, I'm going to refer back to a timeline map that we started with in March of twenty twenty. I presented this to you at that time, and these were our target dates moving forward based on everything we knew at the time. The reason I'm showing them to you is there's going to be some modifications. The timelines don't slip on this particular program, but I want to show you some things that are relative to this timeline, if you don't mind. That is this same timeline, but I've inserted a couple of items. If you will notice, we've inserted on the lower end of the timeline an A F A resolution, which we have just approved tonight. That was necessary to be forwarded. In fact, that resolution will be signed tonight or tomorrow. The resolution will be signed and then forwarded to Text Dot. They will then send Mr. Hotop the documents to sign, and we send them back, they're counter-signed. And I'll go through a little more of that in just a moment, as to what that is required. But that was a major step for us. We actually submitted the A F A, Advanced Funding Agreement, to Text Dot back late August, early September, and we've just now worked out all the kinks with it. Part of that is due to the COVID crisis that has just slowed down what your normal processes are, and has cost us a couple of months in this entire timeline. That being said, that part of it is approved. We have also got our R F Q, our Request for Qualification Format, approved by Text Dot, and we have advertised, as of January eighth, soliciting qualifications from various consulting firms throughout the state. We already have a number who have downloaded the R F Q, which is what we refer to it, and are calling us with various questions. All of that being said, that will happen. We have a selection team in place that will end shortly. I think we give thirty days on that, and then we will select a short list of qualified personnel. Then we have our team, our selection team, which is a six-person team, interview the short list, which is normally four to five consultants. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you at one time set on a selection team with us. So you're familiar with that. And the reason we're doing that is we want to make sure that whoever we select is a great fit for Weatherford, not only on the technical side, but on the personal side and how they interact with this community and how well they know our community. That's extremely important for us. So that being said, we will have, after that selection process, a contract for you to approve in April, and then we will start survey work in May. That's the timeline as we projected out. Do not be surprised for some of these target dates that you see to the right to slide a couple of months as we move forward, specifically with regard to the environmental approval in February. I anticipate that sliding because we were working this timeline predicated on getting an A F A much sooner. Okay, that being said, that is the northern bypass. Those are things we've worked on pretty hard, especially in Mr. Marvin, our engineer. He's been very diligent in interacting back and forth with Tech Dot personnel to make sure that these things come forward. Okay, with that being said, I've got some additional news. Let me just kind of follow through with that. As soon as the A F A is finalized, we have to seek what is known as a state letter and federal letter of authority to actually execute and move forward. That's a written request from them. The minute that comes back to us, we send a written request. They will send us an S L L A or a state letter of authority. That means we can actually start spending money at that point. That normally is a thirty-day process, but again, with COVID, I'm not sure when that is. I've just included that so you know that that is part of the process. Again, in March, we will go through our selection process and then select our consultant in April with a contract for you. Phase two, that's kind of dropped to the side for the last few months, but I want to bring you up to date because it has not been forgotten. In November of last year, late last year, November, December timeframe, the R T C approved placing the southern part of the bypass, the part you see in blue, into the Transportation Improvement Program with funding in the amount of ten million, three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, coming from a state transportation block grant. Part of that ten million dollars will be one million, eight hundred ninety-two thousand dollars of transportation development credits. You will remember those from when we had to, we used the same thing in phase one, where we took our T R S money and would repay a certain amount of those T D Cs. The same thing will transpire on the southern side. We haven't negotiated all of those elements, but that will be coming to you over the next two, three, two, three months. So as we move forward, that money is not available to us right this minute. There is a process. Because it now has been approved by R T C for inclusion, the tip modification comes in, what we refer to as tip modification, comes in cycles. This will either be modified by the administrative staff of COG in May, or it could roll all the way to August. Either way, once that tip is formulated, there are a lot of other projects, when I say that, that are included in the tip. That will be forwarded to the Texas Highway Commission or Texas Transportation Commission for inclusion in the overall state plan, which is known as the STIP. That happens in September. Then it requires a federal approval, which happens in November. So we're gunning for a November timeframe to get funds moving our direction. So I've modified some timelines that you've seen before, specifically with regard to the southern bypass. I've moved that timeframe out for the start of engineering to somewhere around November of twenty twenty-one. We're again looking at the same process as moving forward with that project. That's where we are at this point. Of course, we still, we'll be trying to figure out exactly what we're going to do with the Heritage Square and some possible funding scenarios moving forward with that. And I'll be glad to answer questions, and I hope not having bored you with that.
Not at all. Any questions for Mr. Hughes, council?
Can we go back to the first timeline?
I'm sorry?
The first timeline you had up?
So the funding was initially intended to be available in October, into September, early October.
Yeah.
This last year. So that funding will probably be available by the end of the month. Is that what I'm gathering, into this month?
Yes.
So we're running about three and a half, four months behind?
About three months, yes, sir.
So that pushes pretty much those dates you were talking about that could fudge. If the dates and timelines are right, we should be.
I think they will. The reason I didn't expand them in that second timeline is I won't wait till we get a consultant in place, work out their timelines for their deliverables, and then I can come back and modify that with a greater comfort level.
I might be saying things that you guys are already saying amongst yourselves and just repeating something that y'all are already thinking. But as we get through some of these phases, we're leaving the phases where we're dealing with government organizations that we have to wait on meeting timelines and groups getting back together. And we're starting to enter into a phase where we're going to be actually paying people to work for us, and those people we can't hold accountable. So we're reaching a point in the timeline when we have some ability to control a lot of those items and possibly make up some time or at least hold stricter to the timelines. So what I would encourage you guys to do is to go through that overall timeline and pick out those items that we will have control over versus the items we have no control, and figure out if there's anything we can do, A, to make sure we hold those timelines that we hold to what we say they're going to be, or even possibly shorten those to something. That's my thoughts.
If I might, part of this entire selection process will be discussions about how they propose streamlining the process, at least on their side. Again, we do design it, we send it to Text Dot for them to review. That's the elements we can't control. You can see through this. Once it leaves our consultant in our hands, it goes into someone else's hands. But what you're asking for, I think, is something we intend to do with our contract and with the deliverables, at least from our consultant's side.
And I've sat through these R F Q process selection committees before and seen how they work. And I see that they're part of the selection process, but they're really quick to tell you what you want to hear when they're being selected. But after they sign the contract, all of a sudden, the emails take a little longer to get back, and phone calls don't get returned quite as soon. So just want to make sure that they understand we're not trying to rush a timeline and make a product that's not what we're trying to get accomplished, but we are trying to get something done that's already moving a little slow, and we don't need to compound that.
Yes, sir. I want to emphasize that in the same, but maybe just a little bit different way. Their need to be established deliverables in the relationship established with these consultants. You'd said, and I'm paraphrasing, when we figure out what they're comfortable with on a timeline, they need to understand what our expectation is upfront. If they can't agree to that, if they can't meet that, they need to discuss that on the front side and renegotiate that, or meet the deadlines and the criteria that are established. And we do see those things change after contracts are established. Over time, we've seen those things, and we're all busy. We're all dealing in unique circumstances. We're all dealing with COVID, but we all still have to deliver. And so that needs to be made very clear to them, and hopefully in a structure and writing that's contractual binding to them, and there should be a consequence for not delivering those items. That's the business world, and that's the world that we all operate in. Fair enough?
Certainly, yes, sir. And I believe we can incorporate that into a contractual.
Anything else? All righty. Great presentation. Thank you for that. And you'll be back in, we do this quarterly or semi-annual?
Quarterly, about the time we bring back the contract.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Item nine on the agenda, council, did you have anything else on eight A?
Yeah.
Okay. Item nine on the agenda is future agenda items. Council, anything? Mr. Hotop?
I have none.
Item ten on the agenda is executive session items. Ten A, pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, V T C S, Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in five-five-one-zero-seven-four Personnel Matters. One, to deliberate the appointment evaluation, employment, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, city managers' evaluation. It is six fifty-seven. We're going to go into executive session downstairs. We will come back up to this room to re-adjourn in regular session to consider action. All right, council's back in regular session at nine P.M. Item eleven on the agenda, action on executive session items, eleven A, to take action if necessary pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code VTCS Open Meetings Law in accordance with the authority contained in five-five-one zero-seven-four. Personnel matters, one to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, city manager evaluation. Council, do you have any desire to take action on this item?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we'll move to item twelve, which is citizen comments on non-agenda items. We do have one speaker card this evening, Mr. Yury, Darwin Yury. I thank you for your patience tonight.
You bet.
We kept you waiting a while, didn't we?
Yeah, I think my dog's already gone to bed before I'm getting back.
We don't want to make the dogs mad. Once you get settled up there, if we can have your name and address, then you'll have three minutes, Mr. Yury, okay?
My name is Darwin Yury, I live at one-ten Harmon Street here in Weatherford. I've been with, worked with the city of Weatherford for a long time in years past, and it won't take but a few minutes, because I know we're all ready to go home.
You've got three minutes, so it's already ticking, you better get going.
We got a situation where I have sent the city manager two emails, and it is about a litter and trash abatement program for Weatherford that was so successful for seventeen years. And in two thousand and ten, it was put on the shelf. We had a new city manager at that time, and he put it on the shelf, and we've had a litter problem in Weatherford and a trash accumulation problem for years. I love Weatherford, and I had sent the city manager two emails about it. And if you want to know about it, you can sure refer to him, because it's getting late, and I just want to go home, too, and I know y'all do, too. And other than that, I had sent the mayor an email about a personnel conflict of interest program we have here, and I'm upfront about that, and I think it needs a resolution. And I won't go into it here tonight, it wouldn't be proper to go into it here, but my email expresses what it is. And anyway, y'all have my phone number, and you have my address. And if you want further elaboration on this, I'll sure do it, but I think it needs to be in a little different format than here in public. So I have reservations about that. But anyway, I thank you for your time, and any of you can give me a call at any time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Yury. We apologize to the dog for keeping you out so late. All righty, anybody else on the floor, citizen comments on non-agenda items, anybody? Item twelve. Seeing none, we've got item thirteen, which is adjournment, council? Motion by Kevin Cleveland for adjournment, second by Matt Tiscus. You want to talk about this, or you want to go home, we'll take a vote. Call for a vote on adjournment. Okay, yea or nay, please? Council's adjourned five zero at nine oh-three P.M. Thank you for your.